Good morning.
Good morning.
You find no say in all the things.
I don't know.
Today, uh, we really have one topic of conversation and that is a return to um part two of the five year C I P plan for Public Works. And as a reminder, the C I P plan is a living document that you all will get this clear. And we will review um the highest needs within the community related to the bridge. But you all will always have an opportunity to review and then make decisions based upon that discussion. So today, um, we're talking about twenty twenty six through twenty thirty. Many of these items are in the out years as we talked about before, but again, we have the maps to look at some prioritization and some updates on information y'all had requested from last time. So um, Brian, if you wanna take it away now, you can let them know what else to expect.
Good. So good morning, Commissioners. Brian Staley, Public Works Director, and I'm joined at the table by Janet Lundquist, our Deputy Director, and Renee Valdez, our C I P manager. Um, this topic is is not new, uh, so we will will jump in the continuation of the conversation. Uh, we made revisions to the C I P plan uh, based on our first conversation. Uh, and I have a a comment response matrix on a following slide. Um, and today I'd like to solicit your final comments on the plan um, and see about advancing this uh, document as part of your twenty twenty six budget portfolio. Um, so last session, we heard uh, a number of comments from the board um about wanting to see a compilation of all of the files generated over time uh, on our projects. Uh, you should have seen that it's it's an expansive file of some four and a half gigabytes of documents. Uh, so that is at your disposal to dig into um. The raw scores from the transportation C I P working group are now committed as an are presented as an appendix in the document. I'm gonna pause there.
No, I wanna thank you for that because it I went through it all. And it was very helpful. And I just wanna front load this by saying, I also last night went out to the map. And you guys have upgraded those links. A good conversation we were gonna have even yesterday.
Yeah.
The links have been upgraded and they are going out. And I think eventually as the mobile, the ADA requirements, we can take some of that four point five gigs and find a way to the right way getting in there based on priority that I understand totally with that team, right? Like, but it what you have in there is a significant improvement showing the history. And if we can get find a way to get those historical records in there and then explain the changes along the way, then we're accomplishing the transparency. So thank you for getting that data. And thank you for doing that first step in and then improving those project pages that are attached to the map. So like, it's amazingly better than it was a month ago. Thank you.
And credit to Renee's team for uh, their commitment to improving our visual representation of the projects and uh, staying up to date on each of the projects over time. Um, so we also added a uh, a budget report showing original or a a new table showing original project budgets and year over year changes in the document. Um, indicated which which of our projects may qualify for the Fuels Impact Enterprise Fund. And we have a portion of today's presentation to talk specifically about about that topic as well. Um, then uh, Health Department did consult with some with a project idea that they thought would fit the the uh, requirements of Fuels Impact Enterprise. And then uh, we adjusted the tiered structure of the plan from three tiers to two of here's your five year plan, here's all others. Um, that we will hopefully be able to advance into near near term, into the near term as grant funding becomes available. Um, so I talked briefly about the full uh, documents file that's available and at your disposal. Um, if you have questions about those, please don't be shy. We're here to answer. We'll get our project managers and subject matter experts to uh, to give you analysis as needed on our projects and their history. Um, and then uh, this is just talking about uh, uh, the the uh, individual scoring matrices. These are anonymized from our from our scoring committee. But I did wanna provide for the record the names of our scoring committee. Susan Crick from Spark, Ellie McLean from Budget and Finance, Cindy Stringham from Parks and Open Space, Matt Emmons from Community and Economic Development, Bethany Prolic, previously Bethany Frank, she took her her new married name. So congratulations to her uh, from Public Works and Ian Cortez also from Public Works. So those those are the names behind the scoring matrices that.
Does that resume it for us?
Um, not in the document. Um.
You could forward that to us.
We're we're maintaining, or we didn't have them put their names on the scoring matrix matrices that they that they turned in. Um, just because I didn't want there to be any uh, perceived or uh, inherent uh, uh, pressure to score projects in a certain way, but amongst themselves that even if it's not true in reality, uh, if they score a project low that they know that a specific commissioner is highly interested in, I didn't want them to feel as if uh, there's there there could be repercussions down the road.
You have to read the list again though.
Yeah, and I I can absolutely send down our committee.
Yeah, you don't have to tie it to their grades. How's that? Is that fair? Yes, that's that makes sense.
Uh, should I read the list again or do you want me to distribute it uh, via email?
Email's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. It's nice to see there's such a wide distribution and particularly someone from Spark to have some understanding about grant possibilities, particularly with the grant presentation we received yesterday. The opportunity to leverage other available funds, I think, is always interesting when we're looking at projects.
I'll just interject here really quick before you go on. And thank you for that feedback is that at least in my one on ones with Dionne, it seems to be her style that the board interaction be with the executive leadership team and the senior leadership team. And that, not that we're no contact, but for direction, whether we're out in the field and we want some information that um, seems to be at those two levels that that's how she would prefer that we've filtered the data. That's what she has shared with me. Or not data, but that um, any conversations that we're in with in with the public um, and not to contact even operationally to contact anyone lower um lower than the S L T team. I think, you know, as a new county manager, she's still new. I know we feel like we've been doing this work forever. Um, four months in, I think, is our our July, October, four months in, um still allowing her to adjust to the organization and all of us to go through this transition with her. So just wanted to to name that, that there should be no pressure from the board on on employees.
Well, and I think there's also some peer, our project managers for their design projects or the projects that they're submitting for this are very passionate about their work. And so I'm gonna say, I'm not gonna blame it partially on that. But to a certain point, if you put your um, heart into working on, you know, Berkeley Gardens and it doesn't rank as well. We also don't want the team going in hunting down Ian, one of their peers and saying, why didn't you score my project? So um, there's there's multiple reasons why. It's good to just give a little anonymity.
Um. So this is the table that we added, showing initial budgets to current budgets. And to contextualize this, in some cases, uh, in some cases, the project scopes have changed significantly uh, over time. And in all cases, uh, I shared with you earlier this year, the Colorado Consumer uh, or Construction Cost Index showing that what we spent a dollar on uh, uh, five years ago, we're spending a dollar seventy three on today. And that may that may have even increased since April when I presented that table. So there are there are reasons behind these escalations, not all of them great. Uh, and the the fact of the matter is it's more expensive today than it was five years ago. And it will be more expensive five years from now than it is today. But we are talking internally, um, and part of the audit that we discussed yesterday about what does budgeting look like, what does price estimating look like? Let's get an outsider's perspective on the topic uh, to make us better at this. Uh, but I'll pause here for breath. Uh, any any thoughts or reactions to what you're seeing on the initials versus currents?
Julie.
No.
Oh.
I'm looking, I'm processing.
Oh, same. So when you say current, um, when you say current budget, is this less any grant funding that's been applied? So the current budget is what we need today is maybe like grant funding has already been deducted to get to the current budget. Does that make sense?
This is total project budget.
Total project.
But grants are not deducted from those numbers, you're asking?
Perfect.
That makes sense.
Yeah. No, no, that's that's perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So and you maybe just said this, so I apologize if I didn't catch it. So on the left hand side of the state of the screen, we're seeing, you know, things that were obviously budgeted, say in twenty twenty have gone up significantly for all the reasons you just stated. The projects on the right hand side, things that were budgeted back as early as twenty nineteen show no increase. Have they not been updated?
There there are projects that either, yeah, that haven't been updated because maybe we haven't kicked off design.
Right. Or beca- or because they're farther down the list. Okay. I just wanted to uh, make sure that I understood what the numbers were representing. Thank you.
Um, so I'll take a pause here. I've produced a memo for you and I apologize I didn't get it out ahead of today um, on uh, the Commerce City's engagement with the Fuels Impact Enterprise Fund. So while Janet kicks off this conversation, I'm gonna hand out this memo for you.
Okay.
For you.
All right. So um, uh, again, we're gonna get about um, six point four um, million dollars annually uh, from this program uh, based off of the legislation um, from uh from Senate Bill twenty three two eight. Um, we have always received in our bank accounts uh, twelve point eight million dollars of that. Um, this is um, uh, in enterprise fund, so it is a set aside um, by um, the state um, to fund this program. Um, in general, um, we have to um, just make sure that all funds that are distributed to us are spent um, or allocated um, in some way, projects substantially working, actively working by December twenty first or December thirty first um, twenty twenty nine. Um, the primary motivation of the legislation um, is really focused on mitigating um, uh, freight um, impacts and increasing safety. Um, we uh, have as an agency also recognize that there are some severe um, impacts to our community due to um, freight movement and freight um, or uh fuel creation. I don't know the quite production. Thank you for the word, Brian. Um, so we have added some um, spend of how we can also maybe be doing some work um, to use these funds and to also have um, an impact in that space as well. Um, I wanna go to the next um, slide. Uh, very similar to what Brian did earlier, um, looking back at our notes from when we met the first time talking about these funds. We really wanted to look for projects that had environmental mitigation where we could. We really wanted to focus on safety improvements. Um, of course, we need to keep um, freight moving, um, having freight mobility. And we wanted to be as supportive of our community partners as possible. Um, and then also the added benefit is, um, let's face it, C I P, we wanna do way more than we have money for. I probably how basically almost every local agency, community and the state is. So we wanted to see how we could also leverage these funds um, to help our um, C I P plan. So with that in mind, uh, we went through and looked at our capital um, uh, projects um, that we have listed um, within the five year plan. And so you'll see um, I I broke down each of these based off of that criteria. So um, the biggest one, we're really hoping um, to make a benefit for the Calhoun Buyers Bridge. It was our number one ranked project in C I P. And if you guys recall, or if you wanna even look at the map, it was like over eleven mile detour route, if that bridge is ambixed, or if that bridge is no longer.
Seems like it's far away, but because it's so far away, it's the biggest detour.
Exactly. And so um, that was one of the um, projects that we had identified. I always put um, Brighton Road on this one. That's probably the project I spoke the most about. Um, so Craig Hurst, who um, is with the freight group with um, C dot headquarters, he um, used to, I I think you guys know, he used to be on Commerce City, um, City Council as well. If you haven't met Craig, he's Mr. Freight, I guess is the way you can think about him. And so he administers these same dollars, but on behalf of C dot. And when we were originally talking about this program and bringing it on board, he had listed off a few projects that he thought would be great. Um, one from a lens of being um, a Commerce City resident, but then also looking at the statewide impact of the funding. And Brighton Road was one of those projects that he had heard directly from his statewide freight group. Um, but then also has that that lens of Commerce City with it. Um, I've also had um, individual conversations with Jenna Han, who's their Public Works Director. And um, that's also a shared jurisdiction where we share right of way. Um, so it's also not only just a big freight corridor, it it helps benefit Commerce City and even a little bit Brighton. Um, and so that that project kind of rises in my mind, although it did not score as well as um, the Calhoun Buyers Bridge. And I think the other one is in Bowden Road. I'm sure a lot of you have heard about this. This is one of our last gravel segment roadways. And it's kind of an eyesore as you're getting down to Casper um, as you're traveling around in the area. With that, it's also a huge freight location. And I will tell you, we do spend quite a bit of money maintaining that roadway. So that's another one, didn't score as well in our C I P. But I think it has benefits air quality, turning a gravel road to a paved road. And then also has the benefit of the surrounding area. I I bet your Aurora gets calls from us and we get calls from her on there with. But um, I think that one is also um, one that I would flag for you. Um, so that's a a general overview. Um, was there anything in your memo that you wanna speak to more to Berkeley, Brian?
Yeah, I think also noteworthy uh, in this conversation is uh, how C dot has allocated their, at least their first year's spend uh, in the program. They're focusing very much on uh, spreading, spreading the investment around uh, surface treatments for freight routes, uh, bridge projects, things that they can mobilize quickly. And there's a section on page three of the memo that that shows the so C dot's planned use of their five million dollar share of this larger program.
We also wanted to point out, last time we spoke on this, you know, there is challenge at the state level on budgets. No kidding. Um, and there can be bills introduced in the future that may impact enterprise funds. At this stage, it's not happening, but that is what we're continuing to monitor. We're really happy since last time we spoke that we got the second payment. Yay. Uh, so those are looking good. And if we can get to spending these two payments, it's less likely to come be grabbed back. Um, but just that's the piece that we've been talking about in caution.
So on, oh, go ahead, Julie. Um, so just a a comment on the fuel impact fee dollars, which I think can have a huge impact on our C I P planning moving forward. Couple of the things that I wanted to to maybe propose as potential next steps are um, definitely more stakeholdering. So I'm glad, Janet, that you brought up um, C dot's request to consider um, projects um, specific to the freight industry. One of the things that I think is really important is that the only reason why we have these dollars is because the freight industry imposed that be on themselves. So it wasn't it's not like a magic gift. Um, so we need to show good faith in that we can use these dollars in a productive way. And um, I believe on their list, and Janet, I'm not sure if you and Craig talked about this or not, there are other projects that they were looking for around safety. Um, doing like a safety, and that was on our list as well, like a hazard mitigation route, like. So there's other projects that are gonna be um, potentially considered for these funds. So I'm actually curious, would it be best to maybe form a work group? Um, pulling together our C dot friends. I know Commerce City has a lot of thoughts and feelings and emotions around these dollars. Um, of course, they were granted to Adams County, so I think it's important that we just take a lead um, on leading the stake group, stakeholding group, pulling things together, talking about how to move that forward. I'm not quite sure what the avenue looks like. Is this perhaps a potential subcommittee? To the subcommittee, the COGS subcommittee? Um, is that a great um avenue to have, you know, these types of discussions, but bringing people together for look, really looking at all the asks and then so that this board could see the full picture? Um, because there were other asks that are specific to more of like a safety analysis type thing, reviews, studies in the area. Uh, that will also help, um, you know, that can be used for for these dollars. So I think, again, I I think there is a lot of good overlap already, which is great and exciting. I think just coming together and having a formal stakeholding process with these partners is gonna be really important moving forward. Um, just so that we can make a clear decision um, and understand all of the asks. That's my only take. Thanks.
And do you see that operating, I guess, like Byron's uh, Open Space Grants Committee of here's our recommended list of uh, projects that we'd like the board to consider and approve?
Um, I don't.
I don't know.
I don't know too much about that process, so I can't really speak to that. What I essentially want is Adams County staff, C dot staff, we include Commerce City, um, and the freight industry coming together and let's talk about the projects. And then trying to decipher that. I don't know if that includes commissioners. I feel like staff could probably handle that just fine, but whatever scenario needs to take place for that conversation, that would be great. Steve?
I think you bring up an extremely important point here. We have this for a short period of time. If we do it the wrong, I'm not gonna say the wrong way, but if we do it where we just look like we're hogs get, you know, pigs get fed, hogs get slaughtered kind of thing. If we look like we're just, you know, not that we're disregarding the people who helped us get it, and we're disregarding the community that is is impacted also, our friends at Commerce City, uh, meaning industry and Commerce City, then 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 we're gonna get what we get and then we'll never get it again. If we, that's on one end. So then we'll be playing defense. Um, if we do it and we spread it out, I don't wanna go as far as saying, kinda what you were asking, it's a good question. We're worth, we're delegating authority, right? Uh, so there might be a different way to do, get input the right way and stakehold without delegating authority.
Yeah.
Cause then we're, then we lose it all. And it's a loss. But if we find a way to kinda spread it out, one of the things we can do is instead of playing defense, legislatively play offense and ask for it to be perpetual or extended. And if we do it right, and our supporters and our our Commerce City and the industry, they might see benefit of that. And so go slow to go fast might be something that if we like the idea of maybe six million dollars a year and we I will sandbox is, let's turn this into a from a five year deal to a fifteen or ten. And 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 so like just, I love how you you pretty much laid that out. We, it's a spectrum of making sure we're navigating this in a way where we can protect ourselves from losing this. But if we do it right, we can maybe keep it in the long term. And then I still think, I love the idea of what you guys are presenting here, which is how can we still knock off some of these other things? We can move the other project.
And I think it can be a a both that.
Yeah, I have a question on this this slide though. On on this slide, when you say community partners, you're saying like on the Brighton Road thing, it's possible that we might be able to get Commerce City to help.
Well, it's more of when we complete the project, Brighton Road could annex that segment and we would give them a brand new beautiful roadway.
Could or is inclined to?
Uh, we, it has been suggested that they would be interested in annexing it if we built kind of a beautiful.
Commerce City would. Well, I'll just have you know that Commerce City has a history of annexing things after we fix it. And then when it's time for maintenance, they deannex it. You guys remember that?
Yes.
Brighton Road?
Yeah.
I I do remember that.
I know, it's it's a funny thing. I I I.
Yeah, we all laugh about it.
I'm like, I don't think that sounds.
I was just asking like.
Not to throw mud, but Save Aurora is also kind of in this. And that's kind of that in Bowden Road section too. I would imagine.
Yes.
Um, there would be something along those lines where they have a mutually benefit. Um, they're benefited by us doing these projects as well. Can I ask?
We're kinda doing the same with C dot when they say we wanna deannex, we wanna give you like evolve something. We're like, fix it first and then give it to us. We're, we do the same thing.
Although I would never advocate de-evolution ever. That's just Janet's from the heart, you know? Um, anyways, um, can I ask a clarifying question? I I love the idea of stakeholding. We've been doing some behind the scenes conversations. I think I talk to Craig at least once a month, kinda being like, what are you doing with your money? Tell me what, you know, this is kinda what we're thinking about doing with our money. Can we partner? Can I pick a project for your money, Craig? You know, that kind of stuff. Um, so um, I love the idea of being able to do um, some stakeholdering conversations. Would it be appropriate to say, hey, this is the list Adams County is moving forward with currently. And the one project that I don't have on here is the air quality monitoring that we had identified by um, the Health Department. Can we add that to the list?
What list are you, the deep list that you're referring to? It's not the slide.
Or no, no, it is this, this slide.
List of projects.
This list of projects, this slide. What is this representing? So this is, or or no, Brian, go ahead.
This represents projects on our C I P list that would be potentially eligible for Fuels Impact Funding.
Okay, I think that's that's what I thought. So this is not, this is not this is not the cat, the whole C I P list. This is just where you are, where through your matrix and your readings, you have determined would be good fits for this.
So so my question is, is can I take this list, add the air quality monitoring, go have that stakeholder group as a beginning conversation to say, this is where we're thinking we would like to start the conversation and say, we're thinking these would be good projects to use the Fuel Impact Enterprise and then have them give us feedback. Now, I'm gonna say it's it's very loaded because I know Commerce City is gonna come back and say, we love Brighton Road, right? They're gonna wanna pick Brighton Road and um, Aurora would say in Bowden Road and City and County or City of um, Brighton's probably like, ah, I don't want this project. I want Bridge Street, you know, something along those lines. But are are you wanting, I guess, my question is really getting Jan to, is this the list that we're asking for input on, or are you saying this isn't the list at all? Ask them what they want.
I'm go ahead. Fine with this list moving forward. I'm actually, I would prefer the full memo that you guys presented originally when we had the Fuel Impact fee conversation, which included other non-public works projects um, in in that memo, if I remember it correctly. Um, because you guys had some really good ideas too. And you were, I I know that it was very broad. And you were throwing like pasta on the wall and seeing what sticks. Um, but I think it's, I I think it's okay for us to come forward with some ideas. Like, this is what we're kind of thinking about. What else are you guys thinking about? Where do, where's their good overlay? And how do we move forward? Is really what I'm hoping to see. Go ahead, then I'm gonna hop in.
I like, okay. I think this is perfect for the conversation today that you identified where overlap might be to help us start knocking off some things on our own C I P. Bravo. I like what, it's almost like take what you did with this memo, attach it to the, I actually have the book that you wrote. Good, really good. The way, the of uh, the Fuel Impact, okay? This, right here, okay? This is what you're talking about, I think, Julie, is this take, this thing.
That baby, yes.
And. And because in this also includes not just the CIPs that that overlap CP. But there might be some of that spreading out the peanut butter for a few hundred thousand here and there. That that might make some folks happy and that whole to stakeholder, that's what I'm saying, is like you identified some. Those other things you even mentioned.
Surface treatments and air quality projects and, yeah.
That might be so they're not only choosing five and ten and twenty, fifty million dollar projects here, you also have a few hundred thousand other things, where you kinda spread out some goodwill.
And I will add the provision here, like the fifty million dollar York Street Phase Three, we could not implement that in five years. So we would have to carve out a portion of design or choose one bridge or something like that.
But it's also a good reason why to go for this for it perpetually.
Well, and I also wanted to point out budgetarily, since this conversation will probably be evolving for Fuel's Impact. Budgetarily, we recognize the revenue amount, so y'all don't have to make the fuel's choice. Today, okay. So I just wanted to clarify that because the amount is already budgeted. But then you all can continue to discuss and talk through what we apply it to.
I think that's like sense. Yes, and I think that's a good way to land the plane. I love the idea. Of potentially extending this. So the idea of stakeholdering and including. Whether it's freight, C dot freight, C dot.
Rail.
Rail, other municipalities, whatever that would look like, internal staff. I don't know. We're not gonna solve that problem today, so we'll have to, we'll have to think about that. Um but I love the idea of this being extended and I really think, you know, Adams County logistically and. We fight in Region One on funding. And I think that, you know, we're gonna continue for the next. Twenty, thirty, forty decades uh being great logistics. And I think that this is a way to also help C dot. Um so I'm good going forward. Thank you for clarifying on this slide in particular that this is where. The C dot funding could be leveraged for projects. Um I like the idea of. Overlaying the air quality data as well. Um I'm okay if this is a subcommittee to the AdCog transportation. I think that makes sense and those cities that are interested will stay and those that are aren't. Will move on. Um it's not gonna be, we're, if we set the criteria and this is a good start of these five. You know, these five um characteristics of what the projects need to be, I think that. Cities will understand it's not for their major intersection in their city, or it's not for, you know, this roadway that needs to be repaved, that it's very specific. And really, these are gonna be transformational projects, not just your run-of-the-mill maintenance or improvement project, so. Those are just my thoughts, so.
I love the um AdCog tech idea. I think that's a great starting place. And I think we would um invite them and then um we could even have like Tracy Yamaguchi with um Colorado Muter Carriers Association. Um and we could do, um then of course Craig as representative of the statewide freight group. Um I've met a couple of the freight operators from the I two seventy stakeholder process. I can invite them and get feedback. So I think we can do a set aside meeting with an invitation to our AdCog membership um to get those people. So maybe Thornton's not so big into caring about freight right now, which I don't know that they are other than I twenty-five, but. Maybe, you know, it is gonna be Commerce City, it is gonna be maybe Brighton and maybe even Bennett, you know. Um to get input on um how how those impacts could, if they wanna come to the table and have the conversation. So I think that's a great place to start and then um inviting some of those other exterior um groups. Um outside of our um partners and technical staff across our region.
I'm happy to support to think about. How do we make sure we have the right coalition so that when we go back to the legislature to ask for an extension that we have included all? That those would expect us to include, so we'll work together on all that.
Coordinate regional, this is literally the epitome of of regional relationships.
Can we also include BSNF too?
Yeah.
Because they just.
Exactly, gotta send the invitation and get.
They have a lot to do with this area. We need to have them.
Yeah, and recognizing that we're now, I mean, if the program only implemented this year, but we're, end of this year marks. The second year of a six-year program. I will ask Alicia and Dion to prioritize a a return to you all in January. So that we can get feedback and direction uh so that we can get these projects really moving and. And firing on all cylinders.
The only thing that I can see today is that, and I don't think we need to, but is that the impact of today's decisions. Prioritization by the BOCC. Versus this, is that if we say we intend to apply some money towards the Calhoun and or the other one. To get those out of the way for the other stuff to move up.
Right.
That might be, so we'll just plant that in the back of our heads for the rest of this conversation. Not have to make that.
That I wanted to address to um Commissioner Doricio is if need be. And you all adopt capital going forward and we need to make adjustments because of how the discussion comes out in twenty-six. We can do that through budget amendment if need be, so try not to worry too much about. Getting through these conversations because it's frankly more important at this front end of the five-year plan. That all the questions are answered and the options explored, because then as you talk in further years, you'll have that background. So this is a good time to do this.
And I think another thing, another strategy you can think of not to take too much more time, cause Alicia gave me the key indicator, moving on. Um so I wanna acknowledge, I saw you and heard you. Um uh you could also say, hey, this first twelve point eight million that's burning a pocket that we need to show a demonstrated spend. Maybe we take that and go spend it on our CIP, but the next few years, maybe that's where we use conversation with the stakeholders. And say, hey, um additional dollars, whether that we get them next year or future years, those are the ones we'll be more collaborative with.
Twenty-six million.
With the stakeholders, yeah. So that's also an option, because I think part of it is um if the. If this gets to legislator and they and C dot doesn't show a spend of these funds. Knowing that people are gunning for the enterprise um funding, it might be good to be like, oh no, they spent that money. You know, um kind of. Yeah.
That we don't wanna touch.
Yeah, so it may be, it may be something to think about as an option is strategically, let's spend the money we've already been delivered. And then do planning with future years with more of a collaborative effort. Just throwing that out.
Right.
No hush.
Very good.
Very good.
So tier delivery model, I I mentioned this earlier, we went from a three-tier program system to. Here's your five-year plan and everything beyond. Um and I adjusted our tables to reflect that. Those two pools of projects. So in our five-year program is currently proposed and. Uh recognizing that all of this is changeable at your discretion. We have nine projects that uh total about thirty-eight million dollars of spend, eight point six of which is in grant funding. And we've suggested pacing for these projects so that we are not imperiling the fund balance of the Road and Bridge Fund. Over the next five years. So this is the raw list and I added some uh indicators. To hearken back to the Fuel's Impact Enterprise Fund of which projects on this list could potentially be eligible for uh. Uh that funding pool. So projects uh ranking number one and five from this list. Are also on that Fuel's Impact Enterprise list.
So I have a quick question. Um these are recommended active capital program projects. So we see Calhoun Buyers Bridge again. On this list, if we leverage C dot, that's the direction, cause that was on the previous slide. Does it knock it off this list, but we still have to allocate for it in twenty twenty-six? Does that make sense? Am I making sense here? That's a good question.
These are all our projects regardless of the funding source, right? So some of the funding comes from outside, some of it is Fuel Impact, some of it is Road and Bridge Fund. But this is a representation of all the projects. Just in terms of what they cost and then there's funding stories behind each and every one of them.
Okay, so are these ranked, so the ranking is not numerical, it's not, you know. Cause we go down to the number sixteen, twenty-seven, fourteen, if you look at the bottom. So are these what is proposed for the next five years? Do you know what I'm saying? Like.
Um instead of going by just the the top nine projects, we were very judicious in. Uh the non-county funds column on this slide um of. These, those projects have grant funding or funding from municipalities where we're partnering. Um or they're a board priority project, and that's how we we opted to shift it up onto the five-year list. Um and then we also, I mean urgency, Calhoun Buyers and Explorer Dorkaye Bridge. Those, those are imperiled bridges and even though we don't have grant funding for them. They are necessary for us to make sure that we get done over the next few years. And then my cash flow table here shows. I mean, with the added context of we have regional project commitments that you all approved in in uh the larger budget process. Coming out of Road and Bridge Fund, what we can afford over those five years and some years we underspend. In order to save up to have a bigger spend in twenty-nine, for instance. So that's the thoughtfulness that went into presenting this table.
And we'll continue to update you all on the rest of these as we come back to discuss the F P throughout the year. But um remember last time we spoke a little bit too about. These things can move up and down the list too if a new grant source comes about or. Something of that nature or a safety issue becomes more pressing. Then we'll tell y'all about those things and we'll hearken back to this list and let you know, oh hey. You know, for example, Old Victory Road or Seventy-third Avenue might be lower down here, but we identified funding. We're gonna recommend to y'all, we move on that. So this is kind of a breathing list too, but this has been prioritized by all of those safety elements and partnership, et cetera. So you just know what the general needs are.
The the impact of Fuel's Enterprise on this list, for instance, since Calhoun Buyers qualifies uh uh in that program. If we wanted to mobilize that in twenty-six instead of twenty-eight, we could use Fuel's Impact Funding to to move it earlier in the in the cycle. And that would free up funding in twenty-nine to move Seventy-third Avenue earlier. So there's a cascade effect of of funding that project.
I did notice, if you look at items three through nine here, that middle set. Meaning not the top two, not the bottom, number fourteen. Literally like three million dollars to cover, like a hammer out on your top ten, three through nine.
Yeah, and that's because we got grant funding.
Like what I'm saying is like, we could theoretically commit. Three million, get these off and then refresh that list with. Neighbor, you know, move things up and refresh that list now. And create a plan for that prioritization, is what I'm saying, like, rather than have this be like, oh yeah, we're gonna stretch out this like list here, like say. No, let's get this shit out of the way and start hitting the stuff that we know we wanna get to. And I love what you just said about. If we're willing to take a little bit from Fuel Impact, we can even start whittling away at one, two, eight. Uh whatever the other.
And and I will add the caveat, like Old Victory Road, number twenty-seven near the bottom. It's because it's grant funded and robustly grant funded, there's a clock on that, so we would. Yeah, that's the least of our worries, uh generally speaking, but a great project for us to take care of a major freight safety issue.
Aren't these the types of things that if we show we're committing Fuel Impact Funds to these, if these, do the, if these. Do some of these smaller ones that I'm not looking at those lists together? Because, see, I mean, I think to, isn't that the, if you were saying if we show some spend on that, say, look, we're already helping the community, this is a great thing. It's allowing us to move things up our list. This is critical funding and that just plays into everything, previous fifteen minutes we were talking about with the stakeholder and all that.
Yeah, I think, just to answer your question, I think there's a balancing act of getting those dollars out the door, but doing it in a way. That is inclusive and collaborative, so that we're doing both of those things so that we're demonstrating. That successful delivery, um but I think it's both. We wanna get them out the door, but we also wanna make sure that we bring everybody along with us. So that we have, we're all arm in arm when we ask for more money.
And I think that's that communication of, hey, we really wanna be responsive to the legislation. And show that these enterprises were desperately needed, so we don't wanna take a year and a half, two years to spend these monies. We wanna spend it. In twenty twenty-six, which it would be very, as much as I love stakeholder process and I definitely wanna involve that stakeholder group. Let's face it, to have those conversations, to go through those, to actually scope a project, we're not building something different. And so I think to a certain point, it's um the uh Explorer Dado, I always say it wrong, don't make fun of me. Don't make fun of me. I'm just saying, don't pick on my my ability to speak. Um Cali Bridge um is one that is eligible for Fuel Impact Enterprise as well as the Calhoun Bears.
That's the neighborhood bridge.
Well, that's the neighborhood. And so we could um or we could promote one of the other ones that were not on this list and move it up. Do the spend and then say, hey, fiscal years um twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty, twenty-nine. We go through the stakeholder process.
I have a question. On the Fuel Impact piece, and I know we were trying to move on from that, but I'm looking at your other document, the five-year CIP. And on that, in your initial phase two here, you also have things like Dahlia. And I don't know if that would apply, but it is definitely a Commerce City benefit potentially there. I also noticed on that list.
This one?
Correct, Dahlia. And the other thing I noticed, if you look later on, where you talk about regional, you have the original list on your slideshow.
Uh not on this one, no.
So let me tell you, I do, but like the Dahlia is three point five million. So that, like, if that fits, it might be something that Commerce City would appreciate. And it's number four on the, here. The other thing is on your, is the regional list, the eighty-five and one hundred twentieth interchange. Knowing that money is fungible and that is a very goodwill project with Brighton Commerce City. And it's very much, we're anticipate, we have budgeted fourth um eight million commitment there. But that might be one where we can free up some of the money from that eight million. Right? And instead of a half a million and twenty-six and a million and twenty-six, I'm sorry, half a million, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. We have a million every year. We might be able to free up that million if we agree that we pay for that million with Fuel Impact. And then we're building goodwill with Brighton Commerce City. It's it's a visible project that they're already in. And then you can apply that million towards some of these other neighborhood things. Is that an, uh, do you see?
I do.
Yeah. Except that the hundred and twentieth and um uh. In eighty-five, thank you. Why can't, is, no, it's a ginormous project.
It would qualify, there's a risk that they, our project partners could not spend the money in time. So that's, that's the only reservation.
Oh, I'm looking at our.
So the whole thing gets going, but it sounds like to me though, that January discussion that we have. We don't like to see a few different options of the stack is what it's sounding like to me, like what can we conceivably get done right away? That's just shovel ready and then what else is remaining that we're continuing to talk about? So we can have that and all of us can have that as we talk to our partners. When you all have relate, you know, relationship discussions with cities, with your council reps, and then we're talking with. Staff too.
And this is Commissioner Reddery, so I, I know what you're referring to. So we, we have those million dollar per year. We we doled out some cash to designate to that project as a space holder. Uh we're not specifically committed to that year every year, but I wanted to be prepared in our budget. As the project moves forward through design and right of way. So that's why you're seeing that that chunk of cash designated to the project.
That we have for a million is still setting aside that million so we don't apply it towards the neighborhood, like other stuff. Which is, which is responsible on your part. I appreciate it. But what you're saying is there's a risk that we could get to twenty twenty-eight and not spend that million. That's also that million that we're not spending in the neighborhood now.
Right.
Same problem that that Lynn has uh brought up on like parks, we're just kinda holding money that's just sitting idle. And there's opportunity lost and cost and time, so if we could do. You could take two or three million for the next three years. And build the goodwill on the project while also bringing this money up. For the next two or three years towards the neighborhood. So the same goes also perhaps even with Sable. Like that might be, I don't, you know, the Sable E four seventy. Could be something that would be beneficial if we, I don't know, I'm just looking at this, let's get this, but this regional list in its very nature is a good move collaboration. And if we can take some of the money that's. Stuck here, free it up for some of our internal stuff and build goodwill at the same time, this might be the list that we talk about in addition to one here.
I'm, I, I guess one of the things I'm, I'm struggling with here is what is it that we need to accomplish today? In today's session, is it this strategic, like the recommended active capital programs? That's kind of the conversation of projects that we want to talk about today. Cause there is going to be so many other conversations around this, what do we do with fuel impacts, how do we incorporate that? So I guess, like with all of the conversations and all of the various projects that we have in place and where can money be distributed? I, I guess I just want to hone in on what is the ask for today and how do we accomplish? What we need to do, because we do have people who have heart stops in an hour, so. I'm trying to give us enough time to prepare for um the accomplished, how do we achieve a task today?
It was that slate and these recommendations.
And I, I think bullets two, we have some good direction, uh rather than a preliminary project selection, we. We're going to stand up a committee of stakeholders to participate in that conversation. Generally, the five year plan list, um because that has implications on the twenty six budget specifically. I'd like to make sure that you all are comfortable with the first of the five years, if, if uh. And recognize that the five year plan remains in flux at your discretion, you'll see it at least annually. And we're going to be standing up a quarterly reporting cycle uh where we're showing project process in the current year. Um and financial progress, uh that was a specific instruction from Dion and Alicia.
So I guess, thank you. So I guess what I'm also, what is nagging at me a little bit is. Projects that have plans. Where we not just talking about the money we're spending going forward, but how much, but projects we have already invested years. And money into developing plans and what is the low hanging fruit of those because. We know. And this, I just, I'm talking about where we are, how we got here is not the conversation for today. We have neighborhoods. Who we asked in good faith to participate in conversations. About roads and curves and gutters and sidewalks in their community. And we put forward a plan and a timeline and indicated these things were going to happen and in some cases they have not. And now, and in the interim, again, for whatever reason, doesn't matter. There was not communication as to why. Things were not, they were not seeing things going forward and why they don't know where they are on our list and those people, those, those. Neighborhoods feel forgotten. And I'm not necessarily comfortable just continuing to leapfrog over projects that. We, because we can't cry, well, we tell people, your voice matters, you're imperative to the process, we want to hear from you. And when they do participate and then we. In their perspective, in from their perspective, shelve that with no communication. That's, that's, that's not, it's not, you know, it's not what anybody wants, it's kind of what's happened. So I don't know, I don't have, and I, I, so I like the way Steve's thinking, cause if we can, if, if that's, if that's feasible. If, if it's real that we can take, that we can, you know, do the little, I don't know, those little puzzles, games where you move this, all the tiles around, you know? If we can do that, to knock off some of these, oh, these frankly overdue, like the due dates of, of completion. Are behind us and they haven't started, some of those, I think. I'd like to, I'd like to know what's possible with some of those. And one that we've already, that, and that we've identified for multiple reasons, Seventy Third Avenue for sure, I know that's, that's on there. Because I live kind, I live near, I've seen the changes that the neighbors have, you know, um become accustomed to. But also it's an economic issue too, because we put a lot of light industry, there are a lot of businesses in there. And they need to be able to get their trucks and their employees and they're free in and out of there uh safely, so that's. So that's not just that the neighbors have been waiting, but those, that's a business, that's a, a business um economic development issue for me as well. So anyway, that, that's my spiel, that's my spiel on that, so I, again, I don't, and I don't have the whole flow chart figured out, but that's what I would like to. Is as part of it, what's important to me, that conversation.
So I, I think uh, there, there's a couple of things I want to comment on in, in response. Our outcomes from today, or we, we've been telling everyone, hang on, we're, we're assessing our capital program. So once we have our five year plan together today. Dion and Alicia and I have been talking about what does communication with the communities look like? And we, we owe them an explanation about what our capacity challenges are, what our plan is moving forward and. What they can expect from shelved projects, um but I think that. Designing, continuing to design projects underway that already have contracts awarded. And making sure that the residents are robustly aware of. What are our limitations are and what the next steps are, uh and, and maybe most importantly, how we will communicate with them moving forward. Is essential and we have projects, email lists from participants in those public meetings, in addition to the website. Case by case for each project, we can decide if door hangers or. Cost added investment in communication are an appropriate step to take. To make sure that everybody who's participating with us, everyone who's impacted by our projects and. Requested participation in the past, understands transparently, here's what we've said in the past, here's what we know today. And here's what the plan is moving forward. And I, I think that that's something that we can commit to and will be part of our quarterly reporting going forward of. What we heard and what the outcomes of that communication are.
Can we be a little bit more implicit, can you go to the um cash flow slide? I want to be really clear. This is what you're approving today, if you say you're approving the five year plan. Because really what we're saying is, this is what we're planning on doing in twenty twenty six. And then we will, as Alicia mentioned earlier, we're gonna bring this back again. Or earlier this year, we, we've, you know, we're gonna bring this earlier, this was um something newly implemented as far as the scoring committee and all of that. And we would bring it back earlier and then we would be looking at twenty twenty seven through twenty, or twenty thirty one. So really what you're saying is, what we have in the line for twenty twenty six is absolutely where you want us to spend money next year. And then also, this, these are the projects that we're planning on spending the money. Then I think the second question that I, I would ask for clarification on is. Do you want to strategically say, let's move Calhoun buyers up? To maybe twenty twenty six or twenty twenty seven instead of twenty eight, twenty nine, so we can bring up projects from the on deck list. And when we bring the twenty seven through twenty thirty one, so that's a really explicit or like. Very direct idea of what I, I think we're asking for today, is that.
And recognizing moving Calhoun buyers up is investing fuels impact enterprise fund and. As we're presenting what we can afford on this list right now, or.
So talking about the Calhoun buyers, that, that uh row there, moving the twenty twenty eight, three million up to twenty twenty six, when you say move up, is that what you're talking about?
And so then we would take that twelve point eight that we have in the bank account today, apply it to that project. Which means that later year in um twenty nine and thirty now has, or twenty, twenty nine. Where we didn't have something there, what we would move something from the other project list up. Whether that's seventy three is not in thirty, it's now in twenty eight, or. If we move something else from the other list based off of what we see through this year, Dahlia Street.
Thank you for clarifying that, but I, I guess my question is what Steve was talking about, like the list that he was referencing on the paper. Is that possibility, does, does that money that really like, that money that he identified, does that exist? Is that something you can do for some of the lesser expensive projects, is that the regional side?
I, I wouldn't do the regional side side because in a lot of ways, unless we have something to build to. It's hard to expend a million dollars per year. So the way that we can spend a million dollars per year right now is we have a Chrissy Grant that's off active right now. With Commerce City, they send us a billing, wow, let's say once a quarter, maybe more frequently. And we send that payment of that one million over the year to them for payment. But if we just gave Commerce City a million dollars, our money is going to be sitting in their bank account just the same exact way it's sitting in our bank account. So I, I, I completely understand the forward thinking that Commissioner Oderesio is having in this. I think it would be better if we're really looking at shuffling the money, not to do it in the regional section, but to really do it in the C I P. Would be my recommendation, my.
Because we hold the reins on this project. And know we can demonstrate spend uh within the time limit of the program.
We go to the slate that we're asking for approval. And then we can review this slate again in January as we consider the fuels impacts. If one of these, for instance, Calhoun or whatever moves off. To be funded by fuels impact and then how would y'all want to fill a spot, you could, you can still do that.
Okay, so one of the things, thank you, Alicia, for, for bringing us back to, to this slide specifically. Cause I think it helps to focus on what we have in front of us. Um, one of the things that I do want to. Make sure is included in these um list and the scores frankly. Is this list is here because of the scoring that took place, right? And so one of the things that I feel like we need to kind of go back and reflect on a little bit more is the fact that. You know, we have had communication with residents, meetings with residents. And there have been, you know, projects that have. Been presented to them, um is that reflected in our current scoring process in the projects that we're seeing on this list right here? That has been, and is it weighed high enough, I guess is my question, because when you go out to community. And you have many conversations and the project doesn't happen. I mean, that looks poorly obviously on the county and it really ruins our relationship with the community, so. I guess that is my concern about how these projects came to be on this list. Is are we, are we scoring and weighing heavily the fact that we have had community conversations and these projects have not moved forward? How, and I don't know if you feel like that was included enough in the process. I wasn't part of that process, so I can't say so, but that is one of the concerns about this list right here. Did we weigh heavily enough, community? Community outreach that's been taken place and then are they really? Are, are those high enough to make it on this list? I, I don't think they have all been here. They're, they're currently not on this list, they're further on down the list. I, I, for me, that is really one of the largest sticking points that I have with, with the scoring that took place here.
And the way that I address that specific question in the five year plan is in our risk assessment for each project. Talking about project maturity, uh damage, reputational damage to the organization, should this project not move forward? The, the reason we landed on this list um is projects three through twenty seven. Have a critical spend clock on them for external funding contributions. And that's really, in addition to the, the raw rankings of each project, that's really what informed. Well, there's a, a bigger risk to lose this money and not do this project. On Old Victory, for instance, we lose one point eight million dollars if we don't advance that one. It's not to say that we don't owe an explanation to the residents of uh Seventieth Avenue Project Corridor. That is an important project, it could be life changing for that community and the schools in that area. We just don't have the cash to spend on it, given our current limitations right now.
I mean, an option would be we give back the one point eight million and go build that other project, but it would have to be self funded.
And that's a bad example because our, our contribution is only two hundred K in that, in that instance.
Well, and additionally, we've discussed how. There's essentially three projects on this list then remaining without that identified funding. So then if we do move Calhoun buyers to fuels impact, for instance. That would free dollars for some of those other projects that y'all are talking about. And the main ones that we have had ongoing that are still in. Right of way acquisition, for instance, or other forms of planning is Seventy Third and Seventieth. Is that true? Are there others that folks are still expecting something, but that's been delayed?
Dahlia Street Phase Two is down the road, go ahead, Renee.
Dahlia Street Phase Two.
Dahlia Street Phase Two, and then we'd also have the neighborhood projects, Berkeley and the Goryo projects.
The, that are. Her gut of sidewalk projects, okay. So those are five projects, I'd like us to highlight those on this list too. With another symbol perhaps, to remind us that those are the ones we're talking.
You say those five projects again.
You show what the ones.
Yeah, it's Dahlia Street Phase Two, that one there at the top.
Dahlia Street, the east.
Seventieth or West Seventieth?
So number four, number seven, uh number twelve.
Number ten.
Number ten is in there.
And then on the earlier, on the list that y'all are looking at, the focus list for this year is Seventy Third. So it's those five.
Those five are the what?
Are the ones where we've had active communication with the public. They are still in process, whether it's right of way or planning or whatever. And they've been delayed and those are the ones we really have had some interest in and need to talk with folks about.
Those are the ones, it's, it's the ones that you put into the uh folder of the. And you could look at that folder and I uh. And it's all the ones where you can like, if, I think I sent you guys an email last night, like on what I saw, is that. It's basically the analysis of when it was started, when it was estimated to be completed. And if we haven't talked to the neighborhood in two or two years, that, and now they're starting to ask the questions of. Hey, last time you talked to us, you said this project would either be starting construction or completed by twenty twenty three, twenty four, twenty five. That's the last time they heard from us. And it's those projects um that are in that list, and if you look at that list, you'll see, and then. Prices keep going up, so what's gonna happen here is that ship is gonna be too far on most, most of these pretty soon. Can you go back to the?
I have a clarifying question, because one of the things that you raised, Brian. Was expiring money. Other contributions, grants we've applied to partner organizations that have applied participation. And that was a significant factor for you, including projects. Like, when are we gonna lose money, when is money gonna expire? Help me understand. Cause I'm looking at just this one slide. Where I can see, I see the non-county funds, but those don't have clocks on them.
They don't on this slide.
And so I'm trying to understand. Uh, how to reference the, the large bulk of materials with this and have it in my head at the same time. Can you walk us through the uh non-county funds? And when those are expiring and how, and, and talk through a little bit more detail on how that affected the ranking.
So the projects on num- number three, five, eight, nine, sixteen and twenty seven. Are all projects that we've received um grant funding from. And so you want to think of it as a first in, first out. So if we received, um in the case of Old Victory Road, um that one point eight million dollars. And we received that um grant um uh award last year. We only have so many years to spend that grant fund where we, before we have to give back the money. And so um they have a, and if they're federalized money, so like if we got it through Dr. Cog Tip. Very similar, so that's like looking at Monaco McKay, which is number eight. We got that grant almost three years ago at this point, I mean, this was our funding year that we identified, so we're. We're working within the lines of what we promised, but if we, if we don't spend the monies for three, five, eight, nine. Sixteen and twenty seven, we are at risk of losing our non-county. we are at risk of losing our non-county road.
I think that was well understood. I think they were looking at for those items. What is the deadline?
So it depends on, so it depends on the individual. So some of them, so Monaco and McKay is at risk. If we don't expend the Monaco McKay funds as we have identified here, we are at risk at losing those funds. Because there is, you guys know, going to those Dr. Cog meetings, every single meeting, they have the tip amendment discussion. We are going to start adding to that tip amendment discussion and I'm telling you, we do not wanna go there.
That's number eight?
That's number eight.
Yeah, I think, so we don't have the date specific in front of us today, so I'll, I'll get that. I'll get Renee and uh, his team working on getting those dates together so we can add that to this list.
That'll be really helpful. So. Looking at, thank you for that explanation and putting a pin in what you just stated, Janet. Is there a reason why, and I know, think I know the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask the question anyway. So if we look at, for example, number nine, which is a hundred and twentieth Salem intersection. The county-funded portion is one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Is there a reason why, cause it seems like a small amount for completion of the project, that it's going out to twenty-twenty-nine? Versus us just being like, write the check, get it off the list, finish the project, get it done. Cause that's what it looks like from our perspective, like just write the check for anything under five hundred thousand and move on.
Sorry, um, so when we're applying for grants, they'll have um, multiple funding years that you can apply for the funds. And a lot of times in the ranking or the selection of the projects is au- um, often based on your flexibility of when you can do that spend. So like, for example, um, for this project specific, um, for a hundred and twentieth Salem, that's H dollars. So when we made our application, we may have asked for the funding sooner than, that, all in twenty-seven. But they said, hey, the number of projects and the type that we have and where they ranked versus your project doesn't work for you to get a hundred percent of your projects in twenty-seven. So could you take a portion of your project over this next three years and have a smaller amount each year, but will fully fund your project? So it's really a negotiation with a grant and how they're doing the project selection. So as easy it would be to just write the check and get it done, it's part of the way that we got funded. Is that we negotiated for the money to be spent spent at a certain time. Um, so that we could be, so maybe the city of Aurora had a much bigger project that was funded in twenty-twenty-seven. So they may only had that much available for that next year. It's, so it's about our flexibility and willingness to get our project done. So a lot of the way that it's laid out in this chart isn't necessarily like, well, just do everything in twenty-twenty-six. It's an agreement and a negotiation that we had in order to receive the grant itself. Does that make sense?
So similarly, what we do for when we come alongside our cities where we have unfortunately, we have idle nutty sitting aside such as Sable and um, the E four seventy intersection. Can we do something similar here where we're just like, we'll just fund all of this, you know, cause it feels trivial to me at a hundred and twenty-two thousand, like let's just fund it all and set it aside in an account. And we know it'll get done in twenty-nine. Does that make, when we, does that make sense?
This list is what you're saying?
Yes, it's taking.
So visually, I feel like if we can set aside the funding for that, and I don't know if this makes crazy. I see you out there.
Well, and where it comes down to.
Like we have the project list moving rather than of this logjam, which is kind of confusing.
I get totally what you're saying. The problem is, is the, whether it's Dr. Cox, C dot, federal government. Our IGA with them when we go and issue it, isn't just based off of our local match, it's how they're willing to expend the money to us. So we have to be under contract with them. So like, um, so we have to have that IGA in place to expend that money to hire the consultant to do the design that, and then hire the consultant to do that work. So as much as it's easy to say, oh, that's an easy local match to make, we won't get the other money to kick it off to actually use it.
I'm okay with that. I just.
Thing is, it's not on this list.
This air market and if we can fully fund an air market, take it off our, off of this, knowing IGA is going on.
Oh, I see, oh, I see what you're saying. Oh. So just take it off the top.
We're responsible for to make it happen, so we don't need to look at it, and we need to talk about what else we get moved up on this list.
I got you. So really what you're saying is, is grant money, priority, take it off this list. We don't even need to look at, just go do it. And then you're saying the ones that are not, where we don't have non-county funds, move everything up and so we can have a real conversation. I got you. Thank you.
Sense, you know?
Thank you.
So what I'm looking for and where that question came from was really, as we look through this list, and I'm happy to walk through each line item, but I need to have a hard stop today, twelve-thirty. Is, you know, looking at county funds, so Lowell Boulevard, safe routes to school, like you know, I could just ask for thumbs up, thumbs down, move it along, yes, whatever list it shows up on, fully fund it and move on.
That's current year budget. I just showed it there to show productivity.
Looking at this list, let's see, that one. I am a hundred percent on board to just say, all the ones under five hundred K, we move on and we talk about the other ones that are over five hundred K. Which we've already talked about, Calhoun Buyers could potentially be Fuel Impact, um. What is the other one? Eighty-eighth Avenue Bridge. Where, I don't know what that funding source would be, and then Seventy-third Avenue. That's good.
Yeah, I wanted to ask about Seventy-third Avenue. That's earmarked for twenty-thirty. Does that mean nothing's happening until twenty-thirty?
I'm currently more right-of-way acquisition on Seventy-third.
So talk to me about what that means.
Like that means that we're acquiring the pieces of land all along the route that we'll need to work through. And oftentimes that is the longer piece of the project is negotiating with each of the property owners along the route to gain that property, and we are in that effort on Seventy-third now.
So. A year from now, we're almost all the way through twenty-twenty-six. We have all the right-of-way. What happens, what happens?
It would sit on the shelf until twenty-thirty, when we have the cash flow to actually mobilize a construction contract.
That is what I'm not.
Agree.
That is not, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that at all. Yeah.
Can I just help? Um, you'll see the note at the bottom, which is in small font, but that is specific to the Seventy-third Avenue project, which is that the staff will continue to seek opportunities to get grant funding and then it would be moved forward. So just like Alicia said at the beginning, this is absolutely a living document. It's dynamic. Opportunities present themselves. We put in applications all the time.
Yes.
Projects can move as we execute some of these strategies. So that's a good example of, as of right now, the cash flow analysis shows that we wouldn't be able to fully fund construction on that for five years. We're gonna keep working on that.
Earlier and then that some, then we'd say, why did you, I mean, I totally understand. It's all, we're trying to wrap our brains around all of this, so I appreciate it. Yeah.
The advantage of shelf-ready projects is that they rank better for grant applications. We're, we're ready to put shovels in the ground as soon as you give us the cash. So let's, let's move this to the top of the list. I'm sorry, Commissioner Malick.
And just to follow up from this conversation is, so I appreciate that you're gonna go out for grants and, and everything like that. How do we move this project from twenty-thirty sooner, regardless if we get grants?
So one example would be, um, invest at least five million dollars, preferably the full ten million dollars, ten and a half million dollars into Calhoun Buyers, get that project going. And then we would have capacity to move Seventy-third up to twenty-twenty-eight.
Just move Seventy-third above Calhoun, Calhoun Buyers Bridge?
The risk there is bridges might fall down. So the urgency of that project is much higher, which is why it's ranked number one.
And it has eleven mile.
Perhaps we could put it at number two.
So yes, we could switch it. There's a risk.
What I was trying to say with the regional thing.
Yeah.
Is trying to free up, so the bottom line of twenty-six, we're not having a whole day conversation multiple times on two million dollars. Like, help me understand what the rest of our money is. Like, and also what we haven't talked about is tip. Like, which of these and or regional could we use to free up money for tip? We haven't talked about flood. Like, are there some of these projects, maybe, like Lynn, you're on the flood district, can you talk about like, like, I know that we kinda have like, we, how, how's it working? Don't we get to choose where we get our allocation to flood if it's qualified?
Yes, we prioritize, I have, actually have a meeting on Friday with the Mile High Flood District, cause I'll be on their executive, I'm on their executive committee. Anyway, um, there is, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Alicia, that there is a portion, we are in the, the Mile High Flood District. It does not include the whole county, so it doesn't include, I don't know what our eastern boundary is, but they don't cover all of, like Bennett, all the townships. They don't cover the townships. There is a portion that they collect, but it's set aside for every jurisdiction within the flood district. And then we get to prioritize the projects. Also in working with their staff is what is of greatest concern for them. I mean, they have all the data and all the mapping and all the, all the topography, all of those. And then we get to, um, prioritize the projects and what can be worked on. And if it's a qualifying project and they come alongside of us, Commerce City is knocking it out of the park. I mean, they are doing tremendous, like the whole last agenda last month was all of Commerce City projects with the exception of one. And there's ten, twelve projects that come up every single month of, cause the district goes clear down south, it goes way out west. Um, you know, Jefferson County and some of the, the areas. So I guess I did look at one of the projects last night and we had a proposed a pond or some kind of retention pond. Do any of our projects, not having the data in front of me, overlap with Mile High Flood, where they can come alongside of us and help with drainage?
So the answer to that is yes. It's like, yeah, but what we use is actually not the water bridge fund for that. We actually use the stormwater utility whenever we're doing a combined subject between.
Is there any way we can pri- like, I did not, I don't know what our priority projects are. I'll be totally honest with you. I mean, I hear him here, I don't hear, we talk about different things at the Mile High Flood District building. Um, BNSF was one of those, Outfall Projects was considered a priority. Now the Riverdale Regional Park drainage, that's been a priority project, but these don't come through this. Historically have not come to this board first. It comes as part of a project. Um, they will also put in funding.
Time out, you said forty-seven.
Yeah, that our stormwater program, table ten, page forty-seven on the latest draft, but.
And Commissioner Odoricio, were you talking about what are our storm priorities that overlap with Mile High Flood's priorities?
Two, there's, there's different sources.
Yeah.
One is stormwater, one is my high flood, one is tip, one is fuel impacts. I see we got listed all the different sources of money. I can't find this document with, I'm on the one that I printed out. Oh, I have one point. Yeah.
Cause I've got that pulled up, so where's that?
Yep.
Let me find it.
The attachments for today's study session.
On the screen, what are you showing here? Stormwater utility, right? And where the money is earmarked there.
So we have Broadway Drainage, that's seven million dollars has been committed from the Stormwater Utility Fund for some time. Uh, C dot is less interested in advancing that project uh, than we are. So we may, uh, as other priorities and stormwater come up, we could reallocate that seven million to, to advance other projects along. And then there's, yeah, more detailed explanation in your materials about each of the uh, each of the projects that we've, we've got on the, on the docket for stormwater utility contributions.
And I'm, I'm gonna be really direct with my next statement. Um, Brian might kick me under the table. It's your prerogative. If you want to say your highest priority is that Seventy-third Avenue project, number fourteen. And you want to do it, this board is united, and wanting to do that before the Calhoun Buyers Bridge. That is your capability as the Board of County Commissioners. This is the staff recommendation on the very detailed criteria and report that we prepared for you based off of um, all of our analysis, our subject matter expertise. But there, you know, I, I, I'm in a certified public manager training course. But there's a huge, there's, and the presentation that I saw was wonderful, and it basically said there is a realm of um, basically policy and politics. And then there is a realm of um, administration and operations. You guys are that first group. If you say that this is a political policy direction, we want the money spent here, and that overrules the administrative operational side. That is within your wheelhouse. We will just tell you, um, the reason why we it, we put Calhoun Buyers Bridge first is because we recognize that there are potential risks and safety issues with not funding that project. Again, Fuel Impact Enterprise Funds could, especially the twelve point eight million dollars that we have in the bank now. If you say the twelve point eight million dollars we have in hand today goes to Calhoun Buyers and the other remaining money, we are good with our um, stakeholder group, move forward with the future years. That is a decision that is in your realm of control to make. You just gotta make it. And I think to a certain point, that's my question for you guys. You've already given us very clear direction. Anything under two hundred thousand dollars or a five hundred thousand dollars, and that is grant-related, move it off the top. But as far as the rest of the list, these are our staff recommendations based off of our expertise, but we are in a different bucket than you are in our priorities than you are. And so I'm gonna be really blunt.
A few into the community. Uh, so that piece is really important. So I think there's definitely an understanding there. Um, and we can look at those remaining items, if it's helpful to look at. Slide fifteen for the pipeline, for the other four identified items to Berkeley Gardens, Gorkio, Seventieth and Dahlia. Are there opportunities with those to move up the list if we take care of Calhoun Buyers and move that off the list? Is that what I'm hearing from y'all?
Um, so I really appreciate that. Um, thanks Lynn. Um, here, here's my concern about making that decision today. I feel like I'm still, wait, you said you're gonna bring back to us the dates of the money expenditures, funding years, funding parameters. I would like to have that as a lens that I use to look at all of these projects. I see Steve's got a great big binder out there. I'm not as prepared.
I'm the author.
Prepared as Commissioner Odoricio and Renee and Janet, who probably actually did a lot of the footwork to put these applications in. Even y'all are like referencing a lot of documents to be able to make sure we're holding this information in the correct timeframe. Um, and I, all of these projects are important. There is, there does appear to be, what feels like to me, looking raw data at this slide, as I said before, some missing information as to why they're queued the way they are. And y'all have hinted that a lot of that is tied to funding availability, timeframes, et cetera. I've heard from my colleagues, which I agree with, Aslan's Finance also agrees with it as being best practice. If we have under five hundred thousand dollars of money we can allocate and expedite anything, we should absolutely do that. That's great, totally agree. Uh, Aslan's Finance is cool with it, and they hadn't like budgeted things that, I don't know, they, they look cool. They're, they're not sweating. But to give you direction today on moving Calhoun Buyers up while hearing my staff experts say there are safety concerns that we will be sidestepping to make that decision. I need also that information.
Yeah.
To make a clear-eyed decision about which safety concerns are we prioritizing. And yes, community promises are vital to the trust of government, and that's a safety concern as well. But there are bridge safety concerns, there's queuing of money, other people's money, um, their parameters, funding years, you have outlined, for me, a few factors that I need to take into consideration wholly. For me, a few factors that I need to take into consideration holistically to be, for me personally, I don't know how y'all are feeling, to understand which safety concerns, which projects, which queuing, why. And then also the money, the other grant applications, the partners' grant applications, those, um, calendar timeframes and when. And then you all did this and created this list. Janet, you were so gracious and be like, yes, but you're the deciders, you're the community representatives. And that's true, we are. But I like to make decisions from an informed position. And to me, I'm missing two pieces of information laid out in a format that looks just like this, or like one more column here, particularly with the timing. So if we could just add one column to this about the timing, that would answer a lot. And then I think we could have a substantive conversation about which safety concerns and what areas, what type, bridge failure, which engineers, tell me more.
Sure. And a lot of that work is shown in the five-year plan. Uh, but the allocation of timing is the missing piece. So I'll, in my next edit of the document, uh, capture that.
But I actually disagree with you. It is in there. We put it in these specific years based off of the grant applications, where we applied, where we committed. So we might.
Are reflecting actual.
Yes, yeah, so.
You don't think that there was more wiggle room, like for example, uh, just to pull up a hundred and twentieth and sales, we haven't talked about that a whole lot.
Yes, so.
That twenty-four, seventy-three, twenty-four, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, that is on here based on your understanding of when that grant funding was available.
Yes.
Arbitrarily choose twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
We did not arbitrarily choose that. That was based off of the grant award.
So your understanding of this document is that the timeframes are actually already represented. None of these date timeframes that include other people's money were chosen.
Just to fill a hole. No.
A hole.
Yeah, no, the ones that are with grant funds are expressed on here. Now, the ones that are not are the ones that are solely county funded.
More discretion and wiggle room to make a policy choice.
Yes.
Where they fall.
Referencing.
Yeah. Does, is that helpful?
I still like where Emma was going with this because if we say, we're not gonna decide this at this moment, but you could come back with allowing Julie and I to work with you guys, kind of get our temperature on that, on the fuels impact to see like, what I don't wanna do is, we don't feel comfortable to commit to take the Calhoun Bridge with F E I when we need to do a stakeholder with you to get. And we're relying heavily on that as kind of our pressure valve release for today. And I love that. If, if it weren't for the fact that we.
I don't mean to interrupt you. I'm not understanding the stakeholder ring. I thought we already did that part of F I.
Not with, not with, not, not with the fuels impact.
So you wanna go to an outside committee and say, this is the project that we want and open this up before we move on? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, how we're gonna use the funds. If for us, for us to, for us, if the money we would have to commit today to say, Calhoun Buyers is handled off the list is a lot of the fuels impact money that we previous, that earlier in this meeting, we said, we thought in order to try to, uh, secure this in perpetuity was to have all stakeholders, uh, have some stakeholdering on, on where the money should go so that we are united in showing how it's helping the community and how we could try to obtain this in perpetuity.
So I'm gonna push back because the legislation gives us the authority to spend that funding. I do agree that starting a stakeholder in committee is new information today. And I fear that opening this up will push back Calhoun Buyers, which will logjam this five-year C I P discussion for today.
And I think you're.
So I think if we move forward, we already have the support of C dot on this one. We move forward with this project. We then, linear, thinking linear, you know, linearly, that then we do say, this was a project, it was supported by the county, supported by C dot, but we want to go forward from this point forward and have stakeholdering.
That stakeholdering could still also be us saying, if we have a preference to use this money for Calhoun in years one and two, how can we make sure you guys are all happy with the commitment of F E I subsequent years? All I'm saying is, that I, we might be able to do what you're suggesting, Lynn. But navigating the diplomacy of it, to not, you know what I mean, might still be a good idea to keep the people who love nothing more to just say today, yeah, good, take ten million, you know what I mean, move everything up. That's, I mean, I love that. But I'm also trying to say, like, if we can still try to do that the way that doesn't, that could potentially not put this source at risk. Not create more political problems for us in the next two, three years, but also maybe even create an opportunity for perpetuity of this type of project. It's worth the investment of some diplomacy and time. While also recognizing that if the board says, hey, guys, do the best you can to sell the issue, the, the use of Calhoun, knock some of this off. We can go out and do that, but also know that we may come back and say, in order to keep some people happy, we might need to spread her out. The other, the, the other piece here is that I was, before you, that like, we should understand what can we use tip? We worked our tails off at Dr. Cog to get each tip cycle to make sure that Adams County alone, collectively, but I mean collectively, in Adams County, we get thirty million dollars each tip cycle. And we didn't apply for it last.
No, we absolutely applied for everything in Dr. Cog tip. That's how we got the funding that we have on Monaco McKay is Dr. Cog tip.
What, what, what I'm saying is like, we didn't, we didn't do any of the specific Adams County, un- unincorporated Adams County stuff alone. That's what I understood.
Well, because you have to be in the Dr. Cog region. You can't get funded for a project that's not in there.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm talking about even to move to other things that are.
I guess.
Okay, go ahead. Finalize and then we'll.
Yeah, I just, where I'm getting concerned and why I'm being pushy, I, and I'm acknowledging, I am being very pushy with you guys in this moment is we need to know where we're spending our funds in twenty twenty-sixth so that we can start our R F P process, finalize our contracts, so that we can actually use the construction season. It's the end of October. And I know Brian.
Good point.
Thirty parts.
Yeah, so, yeah, we gotta establish. That's true.
Yeah.
You guys presented something to us that doesn't give us any real discretion this next year. Because basically the two, we only have to discuss two point three, four million dollars, which is either you take what we give you, or you throw out those three projects where we're leveraging outside money. So we really don't have a decision to make today, other than the decision that we were trying to also make here is a five-year decision. And so we need to separate the decisions. You're focusing on twenty-six, which isn't really a decision for us, if we don't wanna sacrifice outside leverage for these three projects. We also need to, so let's separate the decisions. Let's also separate the lists. We could create a list that talks about your five-year spending plan, which is separate than the Board of County Commissioners priority. And if we say that this list would look a lot better out in the community if we had all those neighborhood things in our top five and ten, which is don't have a plan yet, I don't have to spend it, but those are priorities. That's still something better to show the neighborhood than saying that the only neighborhood thing here, the next neighborhood project is the one that's gonna start in twenty thirty, after we promised it would have been done five or six years earlier. And then you go to the next tier and all of those don't even have a plan to be done by twenty thirty or thirty-five. That's where we're getting killed in the community. And I, I'm sorry, guys, I, like, ten years ago, I promise, like, you guys, this is how to do it. And we worked hard to do it the right way and put it on projects and going out, we did stakeholding, which was not easy. We try, we're always trying to do great job to interact with the community. We do all this. And to be able to go back and tell people we said, all the things we did. Now we're not even talking about the promises that we said we'd do from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five. We don't, we can only have one in the entire neighborhood list of those that may be done at twenty thirty. We don't even have that. And all the rest, we don't even have any sort of clue on how to do this. That kills trust. It kills everything. And honestly, curb under sidewalk, I'm gonna just tell you guys, that's what I worked my ass off for the last ten years because it hits everything. Mobility, equity, environment, um, you know, aesthetics, economic development. It's those things that like, that it's, it's really trying to say, these are things that help everybody. And it's a win-win-win. And sometimes you can find other funding sources. But what we're given here today, when it comes to twenty twenty-six, which is what Jan is asking, unless we're willing to sacrifice projects number five, eight, and twenty-seven, we don't have a choice but to say, go for it, because two point three, four is the decision we have today, and it's really not even a discretion there. I say we move forward two point three, four for twenty-six, but I don't think we're ready to have a discussion beyond twenty-six today.
And that's super fair.
That gives us time to do some research and some stakeholding. Is that fair?
Is that one for your construction cycle and for the grant obligations that you currently have underway?
Yeah, if we could get the yes on twenty twenty-six and bring back and have further discussion with the additional four years, I think that's totally reasonable. I think.
Upshot of a five-year plan is year one is set, years two through five are not set. So we will continue to have on a quarterly basis and in next year's twenty-seven budget cycle, more conversations about how this, this shepherds.
Quarter, we're gonna bring the fuels item too. So that's January. Okay. For fuels and twenty-seven and beyond.
True to the point. If you look at, we agreed to twenty-six. We by de facto are probably also agreeing to twenty-seven as far as projects eight, nine, and sixteen, because it's two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Okay. Then the next year, it's another two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then the next year, it's seventy-five thousand dollars. We're saying, get all of those in the middle off of this list. So the neighborhoods and people, and we could commit not just the two point three, four. It makes sense that those middle projects are just off of our, you know, yes. Then get it out. We don't wanna see them again.
And for optics, we can add neighborhood projects or those projects that are well advanced with community commitments to this list and just in, indicate that we don't have a year debt, a year certain for them. Um, but I just feel like that's not as transparent as demonstrating that, no, we, our five-year plan has a year certain for projects to go forward.
What you heard today is there's a discussion about one, two, twenty-seven, fourteen, and those neighbors. Those are the discussion we have after today. As far as the middle three, five, eight, nine, sixteen.
Modest investors.
And twenty-seven, get that stuff off that list. Let's be done with those and never see them again. Just know that you have authority. Five years to, four years to get rid of those.
And that's exactly what I was.
It's like, we don't wanna have to talk about those ever again.
Just get it done. Okay.
I'm okay with moving forward with that. Yep.
I'm putting it down as an action.
Fires.
Down to.
It has to get done.
You're right.
We are carrying it over. That was not a twenty twenty-six funded project. I would like to see the C dot funding go to that and get this off the list. It's out in eastern Adams County. The bridge is washed out. It's an eleven-mile detour. And I wanna see it done. But if it means that we're gonna go out and stakehold this, get on it.
And we'll, we'll spring into action on that. And I will know for both bridge projects, I have them spread out over two years. Uh, just so that we can demonstrate, be compliant with our available cash flow. Uh, they are one-year construction cycles. Is that accurate, Renee? So if we decide we want to advance, um, Calhoun Buyers with fuels impact, we can get that done with alacrity. So, and it sounds like we also need to revisit in the springtime first quarter, our regional project commitments and the cash flow of those over the next five years, because we do have placeholders that may not be accurately reflecting year-over-year spend. So we'll, we'll get that list dialed in, uh, to have a better conversation with you all about how we're, how we're locking up funding, uh, uh, in future years. Let me get back to that list. So U S eighty-five and a hundred and twenty specifically is a big dollar commitment. We put some space holders in that may not, that may not reflect reality. So we'll come back with more on that.
Yes. Are we in a good spot, do we think?
I think so.
Okay. And I, like yesterday, we'll send notes around with the action items identified. Did that help yesterday on the change order discussion?
Thank you. Yes.
We'll do that again so that we can all stay together on the discussion. And then we'll go to stakeholding and see y'all again soon on all this.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Share your discussion.